Let's call the meeting to order. Erin, would you do the roll call?
Mary.
Here.
Dashlet.
Here.
Boer.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Swedberg.
Here.
Meverden.
Here.
Ortley.
Here.
And Kevin Schmidt is excused.
Okay, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the open meeting law. Could I get an approval of the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Is your second? Okay, John's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes to the August 7th meeting as written?
So moved.
Could I get a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay. All in... Did you get the motion in second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Public comment. If anybody would like to come up at public comment and talk about anything other than what's on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward. If there is somebody in the audience that would like to talk about the short-term rental fee, I am going to take the liberty of opening it up to a discussion at that time to hear what you have to say when we are already talking about that issue rather than bring up pieces now. So, does anybody have anything that is not on the agenda that you would like to come forward and talk to the city council about? Okay, one last chance. Anybody coming forward at this time? Okay, if not, then we're going to move on to the consideration of bills. Did everybody get a chance to look at the bills? Are there any questions on any of them?
I just had one question on here, Mayor, about the FTS bill for getting rid of computers and removing the hard drive of seventeen hundred and fifty-five bucks.
We had, there's probably like fifteen computers downstairs that were from the police department.
How many?
I think there were over twenty.
Over twenty, I'm sorry. That were downstairs from accumulation of being upstairs and law enforcement computers. Just like paper documents, in order for us to get rid of them, we have to take the hard drives out and physically they have to be destroyed and then the computer itself can be thrown away. So, that's what that's for.
So the number was like twenty?
Yeah, it was just over twenty possibly.
Okay, thank you.
And I think there was the old server was in there. When we replaced the server, that hard drive had to be taken out of that and so... Instead of continuing to pile them up, I'm like, buyer, let's get rid of them. Do what we need to do. So, moving forward, when we replace a computer, we need to destroy the computer, not keep them on a stockpile downstairs.
Okay, are there any other questions on bills? If not, could I get a motion to approve payment of the bills as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Erin, would you do a roll call on the bills?
Meverden.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, next in committee reports. Does anyone have any questions about any of the committee reports? Okay, if there are no questions, then could I get a motion to approve the receipt of all the committee reports?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. The committee reports are approved as submitted. Old business. Matt, do you have anything for old business?
I don't at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well then we're going to go on to the new business. We're going to start out originally just talking about the ordinance. The next topic after we do that, we'll be talking about the fee that most people want to have a discussion about. So, I'll turn it over to Matt and Erin to talk about the short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah, so, since we met last and talked about short-term rental, I wanted to break it up and really talk about the ordinance because that's how this all started, is to put an ordinance in place to address, I shouldn't say address because we don't have problems, but it gives law enforcement here in the city of Elgoma and city staff to be able to address issues that could occur. And if anybody had a chance to take a look, I know everybody's turned it into a fee structure and how much money, but I don't want it to... The ordinance shouldn't be dictated by the fee we charge to put out the permit. The ordinance will always be the ordinance unless council ever decides to change something in the ordinance. If we notice something is different, we should add or take away from the ordinance. That should be addressed. The fee to the permit, to have a short-term license permit, should be addressed as our fee structure through the city. And our fee structure through the city gets looked at every year at budget season. And we address any fees that have to be addressed. So I'd like to start and talk about just the ordinance because I think we received a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, that they're not in favor of it. Well, after you start to talk to them, they're not in favor of the fee. They aren't against the ordinance. So, if anybody or if everybody has had a chance to go through the ordinance and take a look at the ordinance, I think it just cleans it up, gives law enforcement, gives city staff the ability to address some things that are in it. With that, I'll turn it back and if anybody has any questions or anything that they would like to see as part of the ordinance or see changed, this would be the first reading to pass that or to move it forward.
Okay, Casey?
I, thinking about this since it was an oversight before, I think I have a conflict with my business, potentially with this, so I'm going to recuse myself from the conversation over this topic and within the fee schedule as well. Just, uh...
Wayne?
When I look at your short-term rental law, that's what I'm looking at, and it breaks it down by residential dwelling, short-term rental lodging marketplace.
I just want to, sorry to interrupt you, Wayne, but are you talking this sheet?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Can I jump to that or do you want to?
Yep, no, go ahead.
Because I'm just looking at these definitions. I think, first of all, there was a misconception on why the city was even looking at this. I received emails, you know, from some of the individuals and I definitely agree with them as far as the fee itself. That's why there was two of us that voted no, you know, and we're not afraid to vote no if we don't feel that we could justify that. But, the calls that I get, and I did get some against the fee, but I also did get some saying, how do you control the number of these rental units that are taking place in the city of Elgoma? People are looking to buy homes, people are looking to rent, and there's a shortage. And that was the concern that was expressed to me, and I can understand that. Because I know, one, that they're trying to buy a house and every time a house comes on the market, somebody comes and turns into a betting war and they're going, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent over what they're even asking. I'm looking at how to... We have a lot of them right now. I think the number fluctuates. Every time I hear the number, it seems to be different. Do we just work off of what we're getting in the room tax? I think there's some out there that aren't even doing that. My question was, how do we control the number of them? Putting a fee is not going to control the number of those that are going to come in the future. You're all, what you're doing is you're saying, all right, and I don't want to use the word penalizing, but you're basically asking those that are already here to basically get a license and renew it each year. My concern is, how do I keep from getting more of these in the city? How do we keep from, all of a sudden, it's all rentals? And they're seasonal rentals because when you read some of the emails that we got and even the one this morning that I got, these are seasonal, three, four, five months, and then the rest of the time, they stay vacant. Some individuals have the luxury of during the off-season to turn around and rent those out to some individuals, which is good. But they're maybe for six months. So somebody moves to town, a teacher comes, she gets a job here in the school, she's looking to rent in Elgoma, she'd like to live in Elgoma. There's no place to rent. There's no place to buy. That's my concern about this whole thing. The fee a thousand dollars is crazy. Okay, I'll be honest with you. And I think everybody kind of realized that after that figure got thrown out there. But I don't think a fee is going to deter anybody from buying a place and turning it into a rental. I just don't, I wouldn't. If I come from Chicago or wherever and I snap up a house and I turn it into rental, if I'm going to pay a thousand dollars a year, so what? But you're hurting the ones that are already here and established. Then the other thing is, can you, if I, where I live, if somebody was to buy the house next door and turn it into a VRVO, I wouldn't like it. I wouldn't, you know, because of where I live and the part of the city that I'm in. And that's the concern I got expressed from some of the people that live on the west side of Elgoma, saying, hey, we heard this house was just sold and went for twenty percent over the asking price and now we heard it's going to be a VRVO.
I think you did a fantastic job of how this all started. I think that sums a lot of it up. The simple answer is to say, we create an ordinance and we only allow so many of them. We can't do that. The city can't put a moratorium on, like a liquor license, right? There was a day where the Wisconsin Tavern League went to the state and pushed to say, we're only going to allow X amount of these. And after that, it's, there's going to be a cost to every one of them. Right now, where we are with this, the city can't dictate how many there will be, okay? If, let's just for this conversation, there's a hundred of them today. In a month, if there's a hundred and twenty of them, the city has no, we can't stop it. All we can do is control by ordinance. If you're not happy and I don't disagree with you, I'm hearing a lot of that as well, is you live in a residential on the west side of Elgoma and next door to you becomes an Airbnb. That's their prerogative to do what they want. It's their house. If they want to come in vacation here for three months or for a month and the rest of the time, they're going to rent it out, the only thing that we can do is while they're renting it out, is hold them by our ordinance to this is the way you can do it. You don't get to have a party at three o'clock in the morning in the backyard. And we don't have those problems yet.
Right.
I'm hearing this from other municipalities that they've ran up against this. We're not having that here. The bachelor parties, the, you know, big bonfires, the extracurricular activities going on in the backyard. We have to date, knock on wood, none of those problems. But we can't, all we can do is not allow that to happen. We can't say, and if it's habitual at that same house, we can stop them and not license them, but we can't allow the next house on the other side of the street to become an Airbnb.
Well, and as far as your comment about loud music, campfires, that's covered already in residential even now. I mean, if my neighbors are having a party and it's too loud, he gets a call and he comes up there and he addresses it.
Correct.
Same thing with a fire or anything like that. But, and I understand you can't limit it, but that was my concern. How do we limit it? And the way this is written, it's going to hit the motels too.
Well, we don't want that.
I mean, I, you know, I look at some of the motels. Why should they be getting hit with a fee? Because they're already licensed by the state, just like all these other ones. So why do I hit them with a thousand dollar fee to get a license and then a thousand dollars a year to renew it?
Well, and I agree with you a hundred percent with what you said before, and I think it was a miscommunication, misperception. I'll be the first to admit, I was wrong on some things. This was aimed at residential, not people snagging up the hoses and that was part of the concern. But, after obviously getting feedback and having some very decent discussions with some people, that I don't, I don't think that we should move forward with it either. With, but we're talking about the dollars. Getting back to like the ordinance, because I think, Matt, that's what you want to do right now, is you're trying to break it up into ordinance and then we do the license and a fee to break it up separately. As far as the ordinance goes, I had a concern regarding the, some of the verbiage.
If you pull this back out.
Do you have, does everybody have a copy of this? If you look under the green portion of this, Scott, and then you go to your question on 124 on the ordinance?
Okay.
The green section is what answers that. On 124, section C, each short-term rental shall, if everybody is there.
Yep.
It's kind of misc, it's confusing the way it's written, but if you go to the short-term rental laws, that's actually covering this portion of this page.
Well, and that was, that was my...
Is your ordinance, is it listed on the side, one through three hundred, over on the left side?
There was some reference in there to minimum and maximum days of rental and that, it was just confusing. So, getting back to what you were trying to do is breaking it up, ordinance and then going license and fees, I think there was a lot of confusion, especially on my part, and I'll own up to that. But getting back to the concerns, I agree a hundred percent. We have a shortage of housing and not, it's different but the same, you know, whether it be ATVs, UTVs, or some type of animal changes, ordinance, we can't necessarily dictate that, but it's our job to create and have an ordinance that can be enforced if and when there's a problem. So...
Well, the shortage of housing is something that can be addressed, but we have to step up to the plate and address it. The way we're going to do that is to expand the city limits. And we're, but that's another sidebar conversation we have to have. But, that's how you increase your available housing because we're at, we're up against the limits of the city right now. So, to perpetually talk about, well, we're at a shortage of housing and we're not doing anything to expand the city limits so we can increase our housing load, is, you get into a circular argument there.
And I guess I just want to, I understand the residential feeling of this is going to be a business right next to me. I also want, and everybody that sits here in front of us, in front of me here today, has driven through this city. And I don't want to say just because we're putting an ordinance in place because we have bad things that happen, because I want to give some credit to the short-term rental owners that I think have done some fantastic things in the city to their properties. It's not all bad. A property that's kind of the start of the residential just north of Denny's, the grocery store, I think fantastic property. Grass is always cut, we have no ordinance issues there. I think he's got a good little business there. There's other ones that I think, in order to have a short-term rental, to be successful for the property owner, they also have to keep up with, if you come in the yards of mosquito mess and everything else, they get horrible reviews that are dictated online as well. And I think it just hurts themselves to not keep a clean, nice property. You know, so, it's, I want to let everybody know that there are some benefits and I think we've taken some houses in the city that have turned a good corner in the positive side and put some value back into the property.
I think the other misconception that, in doing some research that I came across, is it doesn't matter if, whether or not I, I should say personally, if I signed up for Airbnb and sold my, rented a home for a weekend, even if I decided not to register and get a license, the city is still getting that room tax because it's collected. So it doesn't matter if it's for two days, ten days, twenty-five days. We are to the tune of forty-eight thousand dollars in 2022.
But you're only getting it when you're registered?
Nope, that's false. With Airbnb or VRVO.
Oh, those.
Yes.
But what about the other ones that don't pay it?
That have to pay it directly?
Yeah.
There are a couple of them out there.
Because the tourism promotion committee has brought that up several times. They're trying to get a list because they're trying to look at how much money are we leaving on the table because those people are not registered as a rental, a short-term rental. If VRVO, send it in directly.
That is correct.
That's why this ordinance is important because we need to get them registered. So, we do know that, Matt, we've, the hotel and other people that own commercial properties, including the motels, are thinking this applies to them. And I never thought it did. I thought this was for short-term residential rentals and that's what we were talking about, private homes that are, that are zoned, private homes. Now you're turning it into a business. That's different than the hotel or the motels. I mean, we weren't talking about them registering them, I didn't think, were we?
There's some myths, and I'm going to speak to that here, okay? Because Wayne had brought it up as well. And he has called and asked us the question prior to tonight to say, does this count? Does this, so, looking back into it, okay, and other people's ordinances, I don't believe that hotels, motels, the business sector counts, okay?
That's what I would think.
Now, be very careful. I'm not just going to say the commercial zoning because there are short-term rentals in the commercial zoning that are not a hotel, a motel, or a function like that.
But they're paying business taxes? The residential people are not paying business taxes?
No, they are not.
And that's, and that's, well, that's how I... That's a whole part of this. I mean, a whole part of this. I'm not saying that that, you know, I voted against it because I thought the number was way too high, but there should be something here. You know, they're running a business within the city. They're making money under business. They're using our facilities. And there should be something for the city in there. We have to maintain those facilities, keep them up and maintain them. But it was never meant to be, we're going to charge a motel at the top of the hill or at the bottom of the hill or anyplace else, or any commercial properties like the hotel. This was not part of it. This is for people that just take residential buildings and start renting it out.
Well, all right, then you go to, then you go to line sixty-three. I was going to say section two, dwelling unit. Dwelling units include residential, first rooming housing, seasonal employee housing and dormitory units. A tourist rooming housing, house certainly sounds like a hotel or a motel to me. And, you know, we're starting to, we're starting to split hairs. That's, I'm a little confused here. I thought, I thought it was everybody or nothing. I didn't think you could separate out a VRVO from a motel, from a hotel, from a condo unit rental.
I believe that we can. But I do have the question out to two different people, one being the city attorney, to see if we can say, a hotel, a motel and a campground, just because they pay the accommodation tax, they would be exempt from permitting under the structure we're putting in place?
Because when we had the discussion, the answer you told me was that...
They all fall under the same, because they pay the accommodation tax. They all fall, and at the time, that's the belief because if you pay the accommodation tax, that's what you fall under. Now, looking at a couple of different things, and I think Jake makes a great point, it's up to interpretation, right? Because go back to the law thing, the sheet that everybody has, and under the definitions, if you read residential dwelling, okay? But now this is the definition for residential dwelling.
Right.
It says any building structure. So it leaves it wide open to say, are they just talking about residential dwellings? Or are they talking about hotels, motels, anybody that's on the accommodation tax?
But, when you look at that sheet again, the residential dwelling, the definition of that specifically says, any building structure or part of the building or structure that is used or intended to be used as a home residence or sleeping place by one person or by two or more persons maintaining a common household.
Common house, correct.
To the exclusion of all others.
Right.
So that, to me then, is just a house. It exempts hotels, motels, campgrounds just because they pay the accommodation tax?
Because, and I'll be honest, I told Matt when we talked about this, I said, if this is going to apply to all the motels, I'm not supporting it. I can't. And that's why I was looking for a definition from you and I'm glad that you're still researching it because I think that's an important part of this ordinance. But I think at this point, I'm not against the ordinance, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to refine it and make sure exactly on what we're getting before we even consider voting on something like that. The fee, the fee is immaterial. I'm not going to support a thousand dollars, but if you feel comfortable that you've got to have a hundred dollars to cover Aaron's work, okay. I think those people could live with a hundred dollars. But I need to know who it's going to apply to. Because it's, you know, if I'm going up and down the street through all the motels we have in Elgoma and everything else, and we're not in this, the city, my impression is not that we're in this to make a buck, like some of these people accuse us of doing. We're not trying to do that. We're just trying to make sure we don't have any issues in the future. There, right now, we don't have any problems. You can ask the chief, and I'm sure, since he's been chief, you have had no calls at any of these VRVOs or people may be falling down and tripping or something like that, a rescue squad call, but nothing that the neighbors are complaining of.
That is correct.
So, I, you know, I don't think we're ready to do anything with this thing tonight. I'm not.
Well, maybe the, maybe the best thing to do then, because we've got some outstanding doubts on the ordinance, just on the ordinance alone, would be to move to table it until some of these questions are answered before our first reading. Because we're not reading a complete ordinance at this point.
Right.
No, no matter what way we do it, it's not going to be passed. And if you decide to pass it with changes, or we can just push it to finance and personnel completely, the ordinance portion of it.
Well, I think you get, first of all, you have to give some of these questions answered because we need to look at that ordinance and make sure we're not penalizing everybody that has a hotel or motel in its town.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, you know, I agree with Jake. I just think it gets tabled and you can, because it's not going to go into effect till January of next year anyway, right?
It's not going to go into effect till March. Yeah, so it's, there's no emergency to push this through at all.
Well, I move we table the first reading till we have answers.
I would second that.
Do you want to roll call on?
Just to clarify before you vote, if I can, Madam Mayor, you want answers on what can, if this law, the way it reads, that it, this ordinance would just become an effect of the residential, but there's also commercial prop, you know, zoned commercial residential houses that would be affected by this as well?
But what?
Well, there's houses down in the commercial zoned area that are short-term rentals.
Yeah, we have houses down...
You can't dictate it by zoning. So, really, the question, I guess, that I'm, would like to get answered is this would be exempt, this structure of putting this in place would exempt hotels, motels and campgrounds? Is that the answer that we're looking to get answered, or the question we're looking to get answered?
Yes, but I would expand that a little bit to actual commercial properties.
That you cannot do. We cannot, that I already have answered by the attorney. We cannot take commercial properties and dictate this differently than R1, 2, 3, 4 or 5.
If that's the case, and I guess I'll just comment on it. If this ordinance, as it is put before us, is the way it is and it's going to be all or nothing, as we said, then I can live with that, but it's going to drastically affect the next conversation and what I would or would not support as far as the fee structure.
Right.
I think that's what everybody's saying, right?
And I don't, and I don't think we're to the point of the fee because I haven't seen the final draft of the ordinance yet. I mean, the fee, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars is, I mean, what do we pay for a liquor license?
Three fifty.
Three fifty. So, I mean, but let's face it, the thousand dollars is just off the table as far, my own opinion. The rest of these other eight people, the seven people feel comfortable with that, fine, but I can't support that. And I won't support this until I know exactly what this, who's this applying to. And at that point, then I can feel comfortable before, right? So, there's a motion in the second to table, right?
Yeah, there's a motion in the second to table. So, do you want to do a roll call and make sure everybody's on the same page?
Again, I just want to ask my question. We're talking about exempting hotels, motels and campgrounds. I know the answer to commercial properties will not be exempt. If you're down in commercial zone property, you will not be exempt. Because you own a house that happens to be in the commercial zoning, does, would not exempt you. It wouldn't.
Right.
That's the question you want answered, is does it exempt hotels, motels or campgrounds? That's the question you're looking to have answered?
Yes.
Is there any other questions?
I would amend my motion to reflect that.
But we can just table it because we're bringing it back anyway.
You're just tabling it anyway.
Yeah, it can just be tabled, the way you have it, Jake is fine.
Okay. Make a roll call to see if everybody's in agreement that we're tabling this.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Casey, Boer.
Upstand.
Upstand.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Merring.
Yep.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yep.
Okay, so, we will be tabled, okay, next item is the, the rental fee. I would like to have Matt talk about this, but then if, if anybody in the audience would like to come forward and make, make a comment, I'd like you to keep them very civil, not, not get everybody all agitated, but, you know, come in and, and say what you wanna say about it, and try to limit it to under three minutes, so that we're not here way into midnight, okay, okay, Matt?
I, I think it was kind of discussed, and I think it, the feeling that we originally brought, that myself and Erin opposed, was, it was based around covering the time to go through this to make sure these people were permitted. It wasn't to, you know, there's stuff out there that the city's trying to get rich, I don't think that was anybody's intent from the council of how we were gonna get rich, um, but I think that a lot of it was answered in the first, first question, or the first, uh, you know, the hearing of, I think, let's get back down to say, these are the costs of the time that it's gonna take for the clerk to administer these permits, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Can, can I ask a question of the people that are sitting in the audience, as an alderman? There's three of them in there that we received comments from, okay? I'm just asking, anybody can speak if you'd like, are you objecting to any fee at all?
I'm not myself, I just, you know, a thousand dollars per tax parcel was a little bit harsh.
Christine? Pardon?
I'm not either, I just wanted to be fair and equitable for us business owners.
Sarah?
I agree.
Okay. Because some of the emails I got, people specifically said, we're not against a fee, but something that is equitable, like he said, and fair to everybody. So I, I think we, we come back with that once we get the ordinance that we're gonna look at, and get it out there so everybody can see the ordinance, and make sure they don't have any questions on the ordinance itself. And then talk about the fee, whether it's a hundred dollars, or a hundred and fifty, or, but we're not gonna go for the sky, I mean, that's just not gonna fly.
I, uh, due to the fee part, my, maybe my misunderstanding was, is, at the time we were discussing it, it was for these people that weren't paying their, their room tax, and how can we defer them, if they wanna do this, then, and they, they would, they wanna be equal like the rest of the people that are already paying their room tax, which isn't fair, that they pay it, and then these other people come in and they're not paying it. And I think it was to deter these people, so we don't keep getting from a hundred to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five, and we have no rental fees. I, my understanding was, is, that's the reason we wanted to put that fee that high, and that would deter these per, persons, residents, not to do this, but at the same time, I didn't figure it was gonna affect the hotel, motels, I figured they were separate, you know, so we covered all of that already. It just, like I said, I thought, when we were discussing it, was to stop these people that were just buying things and turning them into RV, you know, PRBs, and, and vice versa, so it was a complete misunderstanding all around, on my side, I would say. I don't know about the rest of the people, but, yeah.
Well, I, I, my, my thoughts are that, uh, yeah, yeah, hey, good idea, you know, all right, did, it, it, it turns out not such a good idea. On the other hand, I think it's necessary that the clerk, and the treasurer, and the administrator, and the police chief, and the fire department, and all of those first responders that we have, have some way of identifying those facilities. Some way of connecting to somebody besides, say, a zip code in Fort Lauderdale, or, or PO box in Fort Lauderdale, and some way to understand who owns the place, who's responsible, who's managing it, who's ensuring that they're complying with state law, who's ensuring that they're gonna comply with any city ordinances. It was never my intent to ever harm anybody that lives in Algoma. It was to, it was to eliminate this amorphous cloud out there, because the money, that forty-eight thousand dollars that comes in, is my understanding, doesn't tell us who it's applied to, it's a check. And there's no ID to it, and there's no way to know whether it's Bob's Rentals, or Sue's Rentals, or Jim's Rentals. No identifier. There, there, it could be forty-eight thousand dollars, and ten people could be complying with it, we have no idea. And, and there has to be some way to identify, what do you do in case of a fire, what do you, a catastrophe, a flood, a hurricane, a tornado, uh, uh, criminal activity? You have to have some way to connect the, 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 the responsible property owners, either through a ma, through a management company, or the manager directly, or the owner directly, to facilitate, uh, a civil exchange.
Well, their, their name should be on the deed.
And that's part of the permit that we put in place.
And I, I, I think, I think that's essential. And that, that's why, yes, this, this ordinance, I think, is a good idea, we gotta refine it a little bit. Now, what is that, what is, what is, what is it gonna cost Erin to do? I, I, I'm sure that Erin would probably say, it doesn't matter, as long as she gets that piece of paperwork, so we have all of this stuff uh, 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 on file, so that we know when something happens, or that they need to ID somebody.
And that's my original, when I, our original proposal of a hundred dollars and fifty dollars every year after was, it wasn't, we have a lot of good ones in town, and let's not punish the good ones, because they're doing everything right. A lot of them are residents of the city of Algoma. It's, but I can't make a policy or an ordinance for the residents, and a policy and an ordinance for the non-residents, they all fall under the same purview, and that's part of the sheet that we have put together that will get filled out every year to come in and apply.
Okay, so it's essentially a dog license, basically.
Not that easy, but pretty simple.
That's not a good comparison.
But I, 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 I don't know, I, does anybody wanna, I, I guess the mayor opened it up for comments, anybody wanna comment? Come on up, I guess.
I think we're still in discussion.
Thought you might have motioned to table.
Well, no, this is a move of question.
Well, I, we wanted to bring somebody forward to, to talk to the group here.
Yeah, some of, some of these are just questions, I, I mean, I, obviously, I sent you guys all an email last week, I only actually heard back from, uh, one of the chair people, I, I did have a nice conversation with Matt and Erin here on Friday. But I still do have a couple questions, and you don't have to answer me here, right here tonight, if you can get back to me on it, but, you know, so, apparently how most of this all came up was, supposedly there's like a hundred and nine Airbnbs, VRBOs in Algoma. I, I guess, I'm trying to do my darndest in research to try to find these, but for the sake of clarity, uh, would somebody be willing to look up these hundred and nine VRBOs, and at least get business names and addresses from them?
We can try, but they will not furnish us with a list. The su, the, the only list that I found is actually on the DAD cap, and it'll show me then, everybody who's registered with the, what is it, the DAT, is, am I calling it right? Yeah, if they're registered with that DAD cap, which I believe you have to be in order to go through Airbnb, or VRBO, or Marketplace, I, I don't know that for sure, I don't have one myself. But that would be the only way that I would be able to find an address, if I contact Airbnb or VRBO, I will not get anything from them.
I, I just, I'm not sure where that number even came out of, so that's, I guess, for the sake of clarity, I guess I'd, I'd be interested in that, and then, I guess, the other potential problem that, you know, this is all coming, what Jake mentioned, that, you know, the city has a, uh, and it's not just Algoma, it's everywhere in Wisconsin, probably everywhere in the Midwest, who knows, but there's a shortage, shortage of homes, and, you know, I guess, this is something you obviously gotta answer right now, but what's the city, I mean, what, what's the policy to, A, create more, uh, more building in Algoma? I mean, I haven't seen any of it, um, there hasn't been any expansion like Jake mentioned, and I, I, I guess you could probably tell me about over twenty years, I would guess. Um, so, I, I guess, I don't see it, and, you know, and it comes back to these fees, so, I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of groups, there's a couple groups in Madison that's paying very close attention to what you guys, the decision that you guys are gonna be making here coming up, and, uh, you know, I guess, uh, it's important to us as, uh, um, city residents and business owners in Algoma, and, um, you know, we appreciate you thinking for us, too. That's all I got.
Troy, just so I have it for the record, could you just state your name and address for me, sorry?
Uh, Troy Mattson, um, co-owner of Kinz Sport Fishing, um, I also have some short-term rentals, uh, in Algoma as well. Harbor Walk Harbor View Condos.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wanna come forward?
I just wanted to take one moment to say thank you for everybody who's here tonight, doing, um, this mostly out of the bottom of their heart, and I get that, um, so I thank you for that. I think for us as business owners, I just wanna also say, please don't take offense to us standing up and, you know, voicing our opinion on the matter, because I think that's important, obviously, in a small community. So, thank you for those that I've reached out to, and have been very, um, great about responding to me, um, with my questions, and just wondering about what is really truly going on with this. It kinda came out of the dark for all of us that are in the lodging industry, so I just think it's really important in a small community to be very candid and open, um, I just hope this maybe can, um, give us all just a read on, maybe, getting ahead of the game, and reaching out to us a little bit when something like this is coming up, and just saying, hey, you know, Christine, or Troy, or anybody who has an Airbnb, just like, hello, we're a small community, we're here, we're open. Conversation's a great thing, so, that's all I gotta say. And I'm not against ordinance, I'm just against an excessive fee, so.
Can you just state your name and address?
My name is Christine Rule, Hotel Stubbs, Teens Holdings, Rule Enterprises, and I live in a few different places.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, does anyone else wanna come forward and say anything? Okay, anyone else, okay, well, it's the public comment part of it, okay, does anybody else in the council wanna say anything more about it?
Well, I just wanna say, on Troy's question about what we're doing for additional housing, we do have that new project going in down by Denny's there. And I believe, is that forty units?
Yes.
Forty, forty new housing units for the city, we've, uh, cleared some hurdles, takes years to get this going, but we are working on that, now it'll be forty units, right, uh, where we took all the houses down there, so, something we've been working on for, I don't know, four or five years, it seems like. We do what we can, yes, sir.
I just wanna make a comment, it isn't just Algoma doing this, I already was contacted by people from Kewanee and Annaphe that said, when you get this all ironed out, let us know, so, we will all be doing this at some point, it's, it's not just Algoma, we're just leading the process right now, so. Okay, um, then do we wanna take some action of, of removing that thousand to put it back down to the smaller one?
Well, we put the whole thing.
I think I would just table this and.
Table that, too, okay.
And get the, the ordinance straightened out, and then have the fee conversation.
Motion to ta, to table the fee, then, if we're not taking any action?
Are, are you guys?
Table the whole ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I'd like to just table the, the fee as well.
Well, it's part of the ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah, well, no, it's not, it's part, because the ordinance doesn't have a fee to it, the permit has a fee to it, so that's why I have them separated.
Yeah.
So there will be no action taken at this time on the fee.
Okay, so, so we won't do a motion?
Um, yeah, I, 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 it, I think it's, I think it's really, it, it, it's kind of, it's kind of, uh, secondary to talk about a fee until we get this ordinance squared away. I just wanna make sure that our three attendees tonight are, are comfortable with that, because you are gonna be talking with, uh, uh, some of your cohorts, and, uh, can pass along what is, what's occurred. Troy, Christine, Sarah, you, you guys comfortable with that? Or do you want a reduction, what are you, what are you looking for?
I think you folks are headed in the right direction.
Okay, all right.
I would also like to just make it timely, because we are setting our reservations for, our already, August is already booked for the next year, so we have to increase our costs, or will we charge people?
Fair enough, yep, fair enough.
Yeah, I would just make a motion and to table it, this as well.
Okay.
All right, so, you need a, you need a second, a second motion to table the short-term rental fee as discussed?
Move it to finance and personnel.
And move it in finance and personnel to reopen that discussion.
That is correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second it, okay, would you do a roll call on record for that, too, then?
Dashlet.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Boer.
Upstand.
Merring.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to the assessment service contract.
Yes, so we looked at this, um, at finance and personnel, this was brought to you, since then, it has gone to the city attorney, he has looked at it, he actually received, I received, uh, word back to him today, that he concurs with everything that is here, and is okay with it.
Question, when we discussed this at finance and personnel, we mentioned the trailer courts.
Yes.
I didn't specifically find that in here.
If you go to the last page, Wayne.
Okay, just yet, point me in the right direction, 'cause I.
The last signature page, um, under part B.
Under what, B?
Under B.
The municipality shall be billed annually twenty dollars for each monthly municipal permit fee account, that would be.
So that's covering your trailer court?
That is covering the trailers.
Okay, so it does specifically say.
Yes, I, it was one thing I made, that I think was requested, I want that in the contract of spelled out.
Yeah, because when I read through it, I couldn't find trailer court, so, okay.
It doesn't say trailer court, it is spelled out under B, though.
Okay, that's the only question I had, I don't.
Are there any other questions? Uh, could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And then would you do a roll call on that?
I have a motion by Wayne Schmidt, a second by John Ortley, to approve resolution eleven sixty-nine, twenty twenty-three, using, um, associated appraisal consultants as the city's assessor for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight, is that correct? Merring.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Let me move on to the DNR urban forestry grant application.
Thank you very much. Casey, do you wanna take this, or do you want me to? I, I can.
Yeah, you can.
Um, this is something Casey's been working on, a resolution, uh, for some forestry grant money, Casey's done a fantastic job with this work last year, uh, we got the guys, through some, uh, chainsaw training and some tree removal training, we were able to remove some trees, we had some trees granted, um, you know, through this funding. This would be to reapply for it again this year, moving into the twenty twenty-four year resolution that is needed for the, the grant application, so. It's pretty spelled out in there.
Does anyone have any questions on it?
I made a motion to approve it.
I have a motion by Lee Dashlet, and a second by John Ortley, to approve the resolution authorizing an application to obtain a cost share grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Let's do a roll call on that one, also.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Merring.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is resolution for a skid steer purchase.
The resolution, resolution, excuse me, before you, um, is to, uh, purchase a new, um, T, two T S C seven T The resolution, resolution, excuse me, before you, is to purchase a new T, two T S C seven T track. I apologize. It's a JR B skid steer. In the picture, I think everybody has this in their packet. The skid steer is in front of them. This has gone through the Public Works. The reason they had a special meeting last week, last week, Tuesday. There's actually a promotion going on right now that the city, if we get this purchased by the end of this month, that there's a five thousand dollar savings that will come on top of this. So the dollar amount is spelled out in the, in the resolution. And this money is, is budgeted through the capital outlay purchase. That's where this money will be coming is through capital.
Hold is the one that we got?
We would have to trade in that two thousand and three.
Yes, that's part of the resolution as well that we traded in.
They were, this PCB year, the company gave the most for trade-in on our certain one compared to anybody else. So between the trade-in and the five thousand dollar, it was like just under eighteen thousand. Really, we're getting back, you know, we're getting saving for it, toward it. So I mean, it's.
Is this, I seen something on one of the attachments, there is some financing rates. Are we financing this or buying it outright?
Buying it outright through the capital outlay. Yep.
And the picture is incorrect. The picture is a tracked.
Info is though.
It's a tire machine.
Info is correct, but the picture is incorrect.
That is correct. The machine does have tracks on it.
Tracks and bogies.
But it does have the side door.
That is correct.
It has a safety right there.
Safety eyes and everything is.
We did demo through different ones and this one was, we figured had the best visibility. It was a smaller machine to utilize our trailer and our truck. And, but it was a big enough machine to get the work done that we needed. It's got a side mount instead of a front mount, so it's a little bit safer. Boom's got a lifetime warranty on it, so there's really not a whole lot. You can put a lot of use on a machine and not really have to worry about it.
Is the life expectancy on a new one roughly the same as what we get out of them?
Twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yeah, fifteen, twenty years. I mean, you're gonna have your, obviously, daily maintenance. I think we've put some batteries on, put tires on. This machine will have track issue down the road.
Any other questions regarding? Not then, can we get a motion to go forward with it?
Make a formal motion to move forward with resolution eleven seventy-one dash twenty twenty-three for the Airbnb skid steer purchase as presented.
I would like a roll call on this also.
Sure. I just wanna point out one thing. I had a typo on the agenda. It is a JCB skid steer. Just not sure that it matters, but just wanted to point that out. Roll call. Meverden.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, then we're on to the administrator's report.
A couple of things. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four utility and street project on Division Street, that is moving along. We're about a week behind schedule right now is where they would like to be, but everything is going okay. Reminder to everybody on Division Street, please put out your garbage and recycling by six AM. Those trucks, instead of coming downtown, are going down Division first thing in the morning to try to get that picked up and, and out of there before our contractor comes on site and gets started with all of their stuff. So just a reminder and kind of where we're at with that. Redevelopment area number one, tax increment district three, that's the Summit Beach condo work, everything to the south of town. We did have the pre-con with Dorner Inc. here last week. They are gonna probably start grubbing and starting that project as early as, could be as early as this week, that they would start the grubbing of that work. When I say the grubbing, they'll be working on the east side of Highway forty-two. There shouldn't be any impediment to the highway. Everything should be, the way it sounds is they're probably gonna start down at the Summit Beach and work their way up the hill and then dig themselves back down the hill, putting that storm pipe in and then crossing over their driveway and daylighting it out to the lake where that project is taking place. And then waiting for some components yet, but getting rid of the Big Lake Campgrounds lift station, upgrading the Summit Beach lift station and putting bigger pumps in the Bell Harbor lift station to accommodate for getting rid of the Big Lake Campgrounds lift station. So upgrading two, eliminating one lift station and putting that, doing that stormwater work all the way down and then right through the parking lot for, say, of Summit Beach. That's where that's at. So, harbor pier update, we are still working, I am still working, I should say, with the Corps of Engineers. We're getting a little bit closer, I would like to think, I feel that there's some possibility that, hope that we still have of when they raise that, our pier light to address the dock or the, I'm sorry, but the pier underneath it, that we would get it blasted and painted as an alternate to the project of this harbor. So working with them and staying in touch, trying to work through that to see if we can make this happen yet. It'd probably be roughly about a five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollar savings that the city wouldn't have to upgrade the painting of the pier headlight that it would be done under contingency of the project. So, still working through that, but just an update of where that's at. Algoma Medical Center retention program. The retention program that the city at sale last year, September of twenty twenty-two, we put in two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. The city's portion of that was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, which fifty thousand came from the buyer of the property. Total payouts, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. The city's portion that we had to pay out was eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. And the buyer's portion was the fifty thousand, which left a remainder of a hundred and five thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars that will be in the general fund that was voted on back in March that we discussed that will go to capital outlay. So the retention program was paid out. The city has met a hundred percent of their obligation and we are done with that, like talked about back in September of twenty twenty-two. The rest of that monies will stay to the city. If anybody wants, Amber put a nice job of putting this memo together. I have it here, or if anybody has any questions about that.
I have a question. What's, what's the total that we ended up with out of that wholesale? Out of the million five that we got?
I don't have that number, Wayne, but I can get that for you of what the total is after everything now is said and done.
What did we actually end up with? I'd like to know. And then, did we ever actually get ownership on the lighthouse? I know when I left office, we hadn't.
We do now have ownership of the lighthouse. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the last and final thing that I have for everybody is our garbage contract with GFL is due to expire December thirty-first of this year. We put out RFPs for request for proposals from other contractors. GFL, they were sent all the information. We do have a obligation per our contract that we have to notify them that we're going back out. And they are, have obviously been notified. We will be notifying them again into that time window, but we do have request for proposals out. We will be looking and vetting through that process at the Public Works Committee when those come back.
How many actual haulers are there?
I think five we sent them to. Is that, Amber, five different haulers that will be looking at those requests when they come back in?
I don't think there were that many.
That's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Do you have an update on fifty-four that senses hitting city limits?
Yeah, take K.
Yeah, take, take the detour. That started today. Thank you, Mayor, but yes, that's a DOT project, just like Highway forty-two. They started this morning from Sunset Avenue all the way to.
Rio Creek.
Right, Rio Creek.
Rio Creek is where it's closed now, so if you take K, you can get on fifty-four. The next detour will be, you know, in between there. I think there's four detours. As soon as all the culvert work is done, they will open that road back up and it will be done under flag traffic for milling and overlaying, so.
Okay, then for Mayor's appointments, there aren't none. Mayor's comments, I'd like to make a comment that on the seventeenth is the last day this year that the Viking Cruise will be here. And it's the day following the Wine Fest, so all the tents will be up on Legion Park. So the Lions are going to be doing a shred fest there. And they invited several nonprofits of Algoma to come forward. I know that Violence Intervention Project will be there selling soda and water. There's somebody doing food. Lakeshore Cap is, is going to come in from Manitowoc. Habitat for Humanity is gonna have a little bit of stuff here, so there's gonna be a lot of informational stuff. It isn't going to be a big fundraiser for anybody. It's more of let people know what's available here in Algoma. Cause we didn't want those tents to look empty. It would look really bad in town to have all these people in and see tents up and nobody around. So we are having a nonprofit event going on.
The food market?
And the, the, the food pantry is going to be there, yeah.
Oh, the Sunday deal. Casey, what am I thinking of?
You were thinking of the market, the farm market.
Farm market.
They're usually behind the school.
No, I know they are.
I have nothing, I have.
I was just curious if, if they're gonna be, they're not gonna be there?
Right, and then they, they hired the Sugar Bush Boys to play poker most of the time.
I know there's a poker band there.
Yeah, yeah. So it's more of an informational thing of just getting together and, and looking like we're busy downtown. So if you have nothing to do on the seventeenth, stop by there. Okay, if there's any agenda things you need for our next meeting, be sure to get to either Erin or Matt to put it on the agenda. Our next meeting will be October second at six o'clock. Is there anything else to come before the committee? Not, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.